You're watching CHCO TV's gavel to gavel coverage of the October 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Municipal District of St. Stephen. I'm Florence Mitchell. Today's meeting begins with a presentation by Desiree Shelton, Domestic Violence Outreach Coordinator with Charlotte County Outreach and Chair of the Charlotte County Abuse Prevention Network on a Community Engagement and Wellness Fair. Under New Business, Hollis Bartlett, Chief Executive Officer of the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, will make a presentation to committee regarding the commission's budget. Finally, committee will discuss the creation of a Visitor Information Center Working Group and a draft amendment to by law 03-23 respecting the remuneration of council. Now let's join committee in the Moosehead Room at the Garsoon Civic Center in St. Stephen.
Welcome to Municipal District of St. Stephen Committee of the Whole Meeting, Wednesday, October 16th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Call to order, everyone's in attendance. Before we begin, I would like to respectfully acknowledge that we are gathered today on the ancestral and seated territory of the Pasquehaw Peoples. And start off, I need a mover and seconder that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole Meeting, October 16th, 2024 be approved. Counselor Eastman, Counselor Harding, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Any conflicts of interest this evening? This evening, sorry. Seeing none. All right. Take a mover and seconder for the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held on September 11th, 2024 be approved as presented.
So moved.
Deputy Mayor Wheaton.
Second.
Counselor Wright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And I need another mover and seconder for the minutes of the special counsel or committee of the whole meeting held October 9th, 2024 be approved as presented. Counselor Eastman, Counselor Greenlaw, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Now we got a public delegation for Community Engagement and Wellness Fair presented presentation by Desiree Shelton, Domestic Violence Outreach Coordinator with Charlotte County Outreach and Chair of the Charlotte County Abuse Prevention Network. Floor is yours. And thank you for coming. And for the other night. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. So, given me my name is Jennifer Shelton, and I'm the Domestic Violence Outreach Coordinator with Charlotte County Outreach. I'm also the Chair of Charlotte County Abuse Prevention Network, known as, also known as CAPM. CAPM is a group of diverse community members and service providers with the ambition to help and prevent all forms of violence within Charlotte County by ways of sharing information, networking, and hosting awareness events. I'd like to take the time to thank council for giving me this opportunity to discuss one of our upcoming events known as the Community and Empowerment Wellness Fair. I did notice it was different up there, but that's okay. Which will be held here at the Civic Center on November 16th from 12:30 to 4:30. This event is led by Charlotte County Abuse Prevention Network, Charlotte County Outreach, The Willow Center, in collaboration with the Love Shouldn't Hurt Campaign, the Government of New Brunswick, and We're Here For You Canada. The Community Empowerment and Wellness Fair is a free family event that will focus on health, wellness, support, and empowerment for our community. With interactive booths, information sessions, kids' activities, giveaways, and refreshments, this event will provide a space for service providers, healthcare professionals, wellness experts, nonprofit organizations, and community members to connect and share resources, as well as educating the public about the supports that are available within our rural community that is Charlotte County. The purpose of this event is not only to help bridge the gaps that we have within our local services, but to create an engagement, engaging environment where residents of our community can learn about the broad range of services and develop a deeper understanding of the services available related to mental health, addiction, gender-based violence, poverty, wellness, and other systematic challenges that some individuals face every day. This event will provide a valuable opportunity for connection between service providers and the community, but will also give an opportunity for council members such as yourselves and local politicians to meet the service providers working in the front lines, because essentially they are the eyes and the ears of the community. Therefore, thinking about prevention and resolution, it's imperative for the leaders of our community and province to hold space for these conversations and to form a connection with these professionals. I'd also like to mention that November is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, as well as Family Violence Prevention Month. That's why we chose to hold the fair during November. Therefore, this event will have a special focus on raising awareness about the critical and ongoing issues that surround gender-based violence, including intimate partner violence, family violence, and sexual violence. However, as a network, we realize that these forms of violence are complex and often intersect with other challenges such as mental health, substance abuse, poverty, homelessness, along with many more. This event will highlight building strength and resilience within our community by providing access to the tools and resources that need, that are needed to navigate these complex issues. It is our hope that participants not only have a fun, informative, and engaging afternoon, but that they leave feeling confident knowing where they can access the help and resources they need to achieve for their overall well-being, but most importantly, the help and support that they deserve. Again, the Community Empowerment and Wellness Fair will be held here on November 16th from 12:30 to 4:30. We hope to see everyone there for our community, and for our community to come together, support such, to support such an impactful initiative that will greatly benefit the area that is our home. And if anybody wishes to volunteer for the event, they can reach us through our CAPM Facebook page or by calling 506-469-5544. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, I gotta wait. Thank you very much. I gotta make sure I get caught on camera for saying thank you. So, thank you. I appreciate what you're doing as well. Okay. Strategic Initiatives Update. So we've got the updated SMART Goals worksheets. And I guess that's, floor is open, I guess, to our discussion.
Yeah, so taking the opportunity today to bring forward the, our SMART Goal Sheets, which, which you'll recall came out of our strategic planning workshop that we had done, and the tasks that you had identified as key priorities. We spent the last week or so getting the sheets, the sheets up to date, up to date with the work that we had been doing and maybe fallen behind on the actual recording of the events. So you, the, I know you just got these added to your package yesterday, but they're there. One of the reasons that the timing of bringing it forward was I expect that they, that these will flow into the 2025 budget conversations and whether certain goals need, you know, are still a priority or should be replaced with other priorities. So I wanted to give you an update on where certain projects were at, how we are currently planning on, on bringing stuff forward, and allow you to have a little time to digest what you're seeing there. When we sit down and talk about getting into the budget discussions in more in-depth, you'll have these handy and we'll be able to go through them individually. But at this point, it was just a matter of getting it, the information to you so you had time to, to look it over. But if there are questions, I'm happy to take them.
Okay. Counselor Greenlaw?
Yeah, just on the citizen involved in the budget process. I know we got a bit of a reprieve there today, I guess, with regards, or yesterday, with the government saying that we're going to release the, the numbers till after the election and then give us another 30 days after that. So does that help at all with us being able to engage citizens and have public sessions?
So I'm currently working, reworking the, a plan that I had drafted with the anticipation that we were going to have our assessment base yesterday, which was the, their legislative timelines to get them to us. I think, I think we can still do some outreach and some, some communication before those numbers come in. It'll change the tone of the discussions a bit because we won't have, we won't know what the assessment numbers have done. But because we are looking at input of, of information, we can talk to citizens about, you know, how, what they see as priorities and make sure to see if that meshes up with, with what we've already got on the books and, and have those kinds of conversations. And, you know, high-level expectations, but unfortunately, I won't have the same level of detail as I was hoping of having. But yeah, we are, we're expecting to do that. And I think, yeah, it'll be, we're trying to coordinate public dates because our municipal plan is also holding about three open houses over in early November. So we don't want to step on each other's toes either. So we're just trying to find the, the scheduled dates right now. But I think that's going to be the redesigned approach is less focus on specifics and more of, more of a high-level conversation until, at least until the specifics come out and are given to us. Because it's not just the tax bases that we're, we're waiting on. It's the policing costs, which is the single largest line item in our budget. We don't have those from the government. We don't have the equalization rates. Lots, lots of things that come from GNB that we're going to have to wait until a new cabinet is sworn in and, and has a meeting apparently. So, yeah, we're adjusting on the fly, but we're going to get out there and we're going to start talking to some people and, and do the best we can to, to capture inputs that we can bring forward as far to the, the ongoing discussions on budget.
There we go. Thank you. Any further questions or comments from council? Counselor Otis?
I have a couple of questions about the SMART Goal Sheets, one being the creation of regional lobbying strategy with respect to court services. Was that something that was initiated at some point? As a new counselor, I'd love to know if that was something that there were preliminary conversations? Is that something that's a regional initiative or just a, you know, I, I see your worship, your names on it, but is it more of a regional collaboration thing where you're trying to work with mayors to have those discussions? And is that something that we should be prioritizing for maybe post-election season and maybe putting a new timeline on it?
I mean, it's, it's actively moving, it's, it's changes as we go, but yeah. But everything you said is correct. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm green. But yeah. Power and numbers, you know, so I get, I get, and we do have support on that as well. At our level.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
The next one, with the Family Health Center, Medical Center concept, meeting the needs of community by September 11th. Obviously, we're past that, but I wondered too if we could include something on that SMART Goal worksheet about potentially a municipal incentive for family doctors to develop, perhaps if we have any surplus buildings that we feel we would like to have off our list. If we could actually create some sort of an incentive package similar to how we do for developers, but actually for family practitioners, or any, any medical organization, if they'd like to come in and perhaps start an ambulatory clinic or something, that we might be able to come up with some sort of incentive. So just adding that into the SMART Goal Sheet as an attractive feature.
Okay. Yep. You, you have one more? Okay. I, I think they're doing it in there.
Yeah. Last one was, I see that actually one of the goals was to meet with Anglophone South, the executive today, October 16th. So I wondered if you could give us the briefest update on how that meeting went and if you feel that, you know, based on the timeline, that it could be achievable based on your conversation today?
Yeah. So Mr. Sumner and I traveled up there this morning, met with a couple of the representatives of ASDS. We had a chat. It was less fruitful than I had hoped, but probably what I should have expected. And we're going to try and coordinate through, through our reps we went with today, a broader discussion between our offices and, and some representation from the high school to start. We have some historical barriers I think that need to be cleared, and some miscommunications I think that are out there that need to be cleared up. So we're going to try and have that conversation first, and try and get the, two of the major players at least on, on the same, on the same ground. And then what we discussed was once, once we've done that, is opening up a discussion to larger community organizations that, that are using the, the athletic fields and trying to come up with a locally grown solution to the problem that we're having as far as summer maintenance and things like that around the fields. So it's in its very early stages, but we're gonna, we're gonna keep working the path that they've laid out for us and hopefully come up with something in the next little while that we can, we can bring back to you folks for, for discussion and possibly some budget allocation as well. So it's ongoing.
I would just add too, at our UMB conference, that was one of the initiatives that I helped push through and thank you Wade for pushing that through as well as our director. But we got full support of all, every municipality in the, in the province on that same topic. Because what we found out is it's not just us dealing with the same issue. We get all these sporting arenas and courts and all these things and there's, and small communities, you know, you got them, you should be all utilizing them. So anyway, they all got it. And, and it's one of their main objectives. They're going to take care of. So, so again, when I say power and numbers, it's the whole, whole province is behind us. And it was unanimous vote on the agenda on Sunday morning, too. All right. Any more questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you for this, Jeff. And we will go on to Hollis, Southwest Regional Service Commission Budget. Presentation by Hollis Bartlett, Chief Executive Officer. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, worship. I was saying to Jeff on the way in, I don't think I've ever actually addressed this council, at least not in this building. So for those of you that don't know me, I know lots of you, but those of you who don't, but I've been there a few years now. And I've been doing this little tour of, of all the, the local governments that want me to speak on this year's budget, because this year's budget, I think we're on version eight now.
Yeah, we were prepared on that.
So I, I felt it was probably best if, if I just kind of came out, kind of went through that, hit the high points of, of the budget so that everybody has a good understanding of what we're doing and why it looks the way it does. Because there are a couple of things that might look a little odd. I sent out two documents. One is the basic summary of the, of the whole budget. And then I sent out another sheet, which is just the St. Stephen billing. Probably refer to both, but I'll skip through the services and I'll note the changes and then the reasons for why they are what they are. First of all, the directive, the final directive I got from board directors was that no more than a 5% increase overall. So you'll see that the 2024 budget was $7,859,738, and the 2025 proposed budget is $8,182,937, which is a 4.1% increase overall. It's not always going to look like 4.1% in each category. And it's not going to look the same for each municipality either. So for those of you that aren't aware, regional service commissions are basically like an NGO, nonprofit. We have to create a separate budget for each of our services. And the way that those services are paid for differs. So in solid waste, you pay for the garbage you bring us, right? So up till, up to this year was $92 a ton, and that's, that's what, how it gets charged. The other services, so Cooperative Regional Planning, Community Development, Regional Transportation, Public Safety Committee, Sport and Recreation, the way those are portioned out is we take the sum total of the budget, and then that's portioned out to the region for each local government. And those ones are based on 50% tax base and 50% population. The Tourism Promotion, Economic Development are tax base only. And Local Planning and Building Inspection is tax base based on the, the clients that we have. So in other words, if we're not doing, for instance, we don't do building inspections in Stephen, right? So we split out the building inspection costs for everybody else that does receive building inspection. That's how it goes. So it's just how big your piece of the pie is, and that's how we figure that out. And that's nothing that we came up with. That's legislation. That's just how we do it. So I'm not going to take all night here, but I'm just going to skip ahead through the services. So I'm going to start with the solid waste service. You will see that the 2025 budget for solid waste is lower than the 2024 budget overall. The tipping fees, we landed on $95 is what the 2025 tipping fee will be. The tipping fee was raised to $92 in 2018 and has not gone above that since. So you will see that we have a light, slight increase from members, and that's due to that, that increase in tipping fee. Same with ICI and, and, this is like meeting number five of these for me. So industrial, commercial, institutional, CNDs about the same. Either RSC, that's Western Valley, we get half the garbage from the Woodstock area. And then foreign waste is going to be up slightly. The differences come down, if you come down a little bit, you'll notice that we have an increase in recycling. And that's because 2025 will see a full year of benefits from circular materials. So now we are acting as a transfer station for circular materials. They pay us per ton to handle their recycling. They pay for the trucking as it goes up to the processing facility and, and nothing else. So essentially, what that's become is cost neutral. So it used to be a cost center for us. We don't make any money on this, but we no longer lose money on this either. So it's, it's a, just a service we're providing so that circular materials can carry on with what they're doing. And the bigger difference you will see is the surpluses. So coming into 2024, I had a big surplus of $950,000 to deal with. A couple of years ago, we lost one of our major customers in USA. And this is the, the leftover from those good years. So going into 2025, I had much less of a surplus to deal with. And so that necessitated the change in budget. So how we got there was a couple of things. We actually did have to have an increase in our asset retirement line. So that's our closure fund, because there was, it was off. And so we had to make an adjustment there. So that's actually going to be higher for 2025. We're going to take a little less capital expenditures out of operations for 2025. We do have a big capital next year, so there will be a withdraw from our capital reserve. Reason being, we have to buy a garbage compactor. It's just come time. The one we're running, the main one is 15 years old now. We rebuilt it, I think, seven years ago. It's due, so those are a million and a half to, that's what we got budgeted anyway. We'll see where the bids come in at. And the other places, we made some changes to operations, which resulted in significant savings there, which brought our budget down. In case people are asking or wondering, we have, this is the first time this has ever happened. So at a landfill, we build the cells and we built them all in a row. And every year, we've done construction to do this. And then, so we had 10, 10 this way, then we had an 11, which we started, got into last year. So then there's 12 and 13, which lay sideways, which gives us all that extra space, that V in the middle, if you can imagine, two hills going. We can also go up a little higher, which is actually where we are right now. We're starting to go higher at the end where cell 11 and 10 are. So we sat back and looked at it, and we are, we just completed cell number 13. So that's the under drains, the berms, liners, all that kind of stuff. They're ready to receive waste. So we have cells 12 and 13, which are completely empty, and we are going higher at the end. So we have a minimum of five years engineered space ready to go. So the big change was that we don't do construction for a couple of years. That's never happened. So, and because of that, we made some changes to the operation to cut back on expenses. Any questions on that for a moment? Or do we save questions to the end? I don't know how your format goes.
Sorry. Back up to the top. That regional transportation, like it was 761 last year and 20,000 this year. So what?
I'll let you say.
Okay. All right. So moving on to local planning. No real big news there. There's no real change of that service. And it's gone up a little bit, but less than the rate of inflation. It's gone from 938,000 to 950,000. Not really much to talk about there. Cooperative Regional Planning looks a lot different from your member contribution point of view, but the actual budget for cooperative regional planning didn't really change significantly. The reason being 2024, I had a big surplus going in, and I don't have that in 2025. That's really the only difference. Essentially, it's the same budget, the same stuff. Moving on to regional tourism. Now here's where it gets a little bit interesting, because I had to play a bit of a shell game here. And there's a reason why. So as part of local governance reform, they came up with a Regional Services Support Fund. And what's happened is they are, they're using funds that came from your grants that you are diminishing each year. And they built this fund at the provincial government level. And in order to get that funding, they're only applicable to these new services. In order to get that funding, I have to match it. I can match it with member contributions, or I can match it with sometimes government contributions. But it's not a matter of matching the whole sum. And it's not even what originally was supposed to be the service. So let's say Tourism Promotion, I could say, I need $200,000 for Tourism Promotion, you know, I could match that way. That's not even it. It's actually per activity that I have to apply. And this is an application, which got turned down six times last year before I got a successful application. But it's per activity that we do. I'm going to put this much RSSF money into, and it's going to be matched with either this much from a member contribution. It's, it's a whole thing. So what I've done here in this budget, the Tourism Promotion contribution for members is higher. The economic development portion is much, much lower. And the reason for that is the Tourism Promotion service. What the province did was they didn't provide funding for Tourism Promotion necessarily. There's a little bit there from THC that they're going to do a, a co-investment with us on, on some promotion stuff. But what they did do is they made changes to the LGA so that you could put in a tourism levy. And that's the expectation that if we're going to get bigger or do stuff in, in tourism, that you look at a tourism levy. There's a couple of local governments in our region that are now doing this. And I know that some are looking at it, completely up to you folks if you want to do it. I recommend you do it. And I think you would find that you would have more than you might think. Because that tourism levy applies to short-term rentals, Airbnbs and stuff. And if you want the database of what's in St. Stephen for Airbnb, Sherry Rice, well, she's got all that information. So I'm just going to leave that with you folks to, that's a you thing. But there is a mechanism there to pay this bill, if you want to go that way. So in Tourism Promotion, the 2025 budget looks like it's a lot bigger than the 2024 budget. 2025 budget's 525, and 2024 was approved at 328. However, things happened after that was approved. And so they're actually about equivalent, because we end up getting some transitional funding, which paid for website and branding and several other things as well. So the foundation has been built in tourism, and to move forward, this is the, this is essentially the budget we're going to need to, to move forward with. So to move on to economic development, very similar thing happened there, too. Some of that transitional funding I got also applied to economic development. We had a, a lot of good things happen within economic development in 2024, and we want to continue that into 2025. But as I said, I've played with some numbers, we've done some things around. So your bill for economic development in 2025 is going to be about half what it was in 2024. And that's to kind of offset some of the other stuff. So to move on to community development. And by the way, And by the way, just staying on economic development for a minute, I know that there are some conversations around economic development in St. Stephen, local economic development. Not gonna get into that, but involve us because we can help, we can assist, we can support, and that's what one of our roles in economic development is to support local economic development. Chambers of Commerce and other things as well, but just keep us in the loop and we can help you. So community development looks like, again, a much bigger budget. It kind of is and it kind of isn't. So one of the things that happened out of COVID was Justice of Public Safety put together Regional Resiliency, which was separate completely from Regional Service Commission initially. And then it became a piece of it, and now the money is actually flowing through the Regional Service Commission in 2025. So that's why you see that JPS line of fifty thousand dollars. Last year, that twenty-seven thousand dollars applied to, it was half the funding for a grant writer that we hired in 2024. And so going forward in 2025, that salary is completely on us. It is something that I would also recommend that you speak to our grant writer to see if there's any opportunities for the municipality. He spent the first part of this was a lot of foundation building. So a lot of building the database, figuring out where the money is, what the deadlines are, what the requirements are, that kind of stuff. And then putting together a template, what he calls tombstone data, so so it makes it super easy to apply if something comes up. We can, you know, get those applications out there for the various grants at different levels of government, or wherever those grants happen to come from. So there's an online application now that he's got built. And he's gathered up the database and now he's moving forward. He did give us a presentation at last week's meeting about the, where he's at, there's been some successes. There's a lot of stuff that's in progress, it's over a million dollars of grants that are in progress right now, and then there's some stuff on the horizon as well. So I expect that to continue, and we're gonna continue to monitor that, but I think he's he's been a great asset so far, again, foundational year. I'm hoping 2025, but he's gonna be even bigger from him. Let's see, what else do I have there? It's a community development that, again, that's why the budget seems bigger. You will see that we're now filtering all that JPS money, there's a grant writer in there. ESIC has upped their game in terms of the grants that they are flowing through our community development. Ray Funk, I don't know if you've, folks know him, but he's he's been doing a bang-up job. So he'll manage a lot of the smaller projects and grants, it might be things like backpack program or might be something for like a school food program or food security, that kind of stuff. So a lot of that ESIC money that you see there that's increased is all of those grants that flow through us to other organizations within the region. He also has upcoming, I'm just gonna plug this for now, a governance workshop. I suggest you all, if if you're involved with anything, it's worthwhile to have that governance training. That's a part of strengthening the the region as well. So regional transportation, Ghislaine, to get to your question. Is a lot bigger and there's a reason for that. So I was just speaking about the grant writer, he uncovered a grant early on that we had to apply for kind of right away because the deadline was quick. The grant is a federal grant for transportation. It's in the eight hundred thousand dollar range. However, in order to access it, we have to also have to have some skin in the game, as they call it. I think RDC is coming to the table on that as well, but we also have to put in like a ten percent. So that's what that money is there for in in the transportation. I don't know that we're gonna be successful with it, and if we are successful, I don't know how much we're gonna qualify for it. This is the same fund, by the way, that ECW had for the project village cars, this came from the same place. And if we are successful with the transportation grant, then we gotta figure out the other side of that, how to spend it. So and that's another conversation for our board to sort out. Because it's for capital costs, like most of these things are. So we'd be looking at well, probably, first thing would be replacing the wheelchair accessible van for dial-a-ride. I know they need a new one, I know that you've heard from Lorraine Justison, she's been talking about wheelchair accessible bus, so maybe that's a possibility as well, maybe there's a, there's a few other projects around the region that we would have to sort out. Depending on how much we qualify for, if there's any parameters around it, and and what the wishes of the board are, really. So it's going to, I still don't know what the outcome of that is. The problem that was brought before me was, okay, so if we put this much money in the transportation budget and we're completely unsuccessful in getting the grant, problem is we don't spend that much in transportation. And it would just sit there for a long time, kind of locked up. So if we're unsuccessful, what we're gonna do is unlock the money by having a transportation rebate to local governments that contributed, so basically you get your money back. But I need the money there in the budget in order to be able to access this larger amount of money. Public Safety Committee is, the Public Safety Committee, no much change there, just a point of note that the speed sign actually gets included in that budget too. So there's licensing costs and things for that. So looking at your billing. Certainly some things have gone up, some things have gone down. The solid waste is a is a complete estimate based on the tonnage you're bringing us. My message would be encourage recycling as much as you can now, I wouldn't have said that before because it was a cost center. But now we get paid for it, and the more residents recycle, the less it's gonna cost the town to pay for garbage. And yeah, that's it, if there's any, oh, I do wanna talk about the recreation piece too. So recreation, there is a change in recreation. Recreation is really nothing more than an accounting exercise for 2025. I don't have anybody in recreation, there is no resources for recreation, we're not doing anything in recreation other than the actual cost sharing piece. So in recreation, your bill is a hundred and ninety-five thousand, but your actual contribution to the cost sharing pool is a hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-eight, and the rebate that you are gonna get back is two hundred and sixteen thousand one twenty-one. So that largely comes from rural districts.
Oh, Council Heisler.
Okay, yeah, that's one of the ones I was gonna ask you about is sports and recreation, because I see the big numbers here, like five hundred and twenty-five thousand for regional tourism tourism promotion, and then we had the regional sport recreation was seven ninety-three. Now where do we see that? Like I see the numbers, but like, you know, like it's easy to see building inspection and and planning, because we have them come into our to our room and it's tangible, right? But what about recreation and and tourism? Where do we see that? Like I just, I've asked the question here before, like what what value does that bring specifically to the to the municipality?
So this is a question that I had from every local government.
And is definitely the struggle that everybody is having right now provincially. And so here's the issue, we used to do things that rely on items on a municipal budget, like you can easily tell your your planning, your building inspection, your your solid waste stuff, those are, that's basic municipal business. This stuff is not, this is regional business too, because it's not specific to St. Stephen. And this is where the struggle, everybody's kind of struggling. The benefit is not to you as a municipal corporation. The benefit is to the citizens as a whole in the region. The benefit long-term, and these are, these are long games, tourism and economic development and stuff. The benefit as a whole is of course increased, increased tourism, increased business, increased visibility. A stronger workforce, our concentration for regional economic development, for instance, is largely on workforce, like we do a lot of, because we have a regional workforce. A lot of people working in St. Stephen don't live here, a lot of people living in St. Stephen don't work here, and so they they move around a lot, so that's where we have to get the supports when it comes to looking at the gaps, the terrain, and that kind of stuff, so that's that's a big piece of regional economic development. But you're right that it's not a line item that you're used to as a as a local government, and that's the struggle that everybody's having.
So there is no sports and recreation this year, but there was last year, right? There was somebody in that position.
With trails and things like that, and, but next year, no.
Yeah, I'm still struggling with that. I just see the duplication and I don't see the I guess, I know there's long-term benefits to a lot of things, it takes many years to get things going, right, but I just don't see the the short-term gain that we're getting, right? I just, I just struggle with that. And I've, you know, I've asked this in this room before, so I just just wanted to bring up that question, and it has explained a little bit, but I still struggle with it for a while.
Promotion, tourism promotion, that stuff's expensive, it just is to get that stuff. You're not gonna see any of the, I mean, you can certainly go to our tourism website, which is up and running now. But we don't promote our tourism brand here. That would be silly, we promote it elsewhere, so our our target markets that we've identified through a bunch of analysis and things that we've done are places like Ontario, Nova Scotia, Eastern Seaboard USA. So you're never gonna see the ads here, because these are targeted, a lot of social media kind of stuff, but they're targeted to the areas that we don't live in, so you're never gonna see that piece of it. Eventually you will see that increase in in tourism, and we have a lot of KPIs that we have set out, so we're measuring this, and we have a lot of data now that we've measured on what visitors do now, where they come from, where they stay, what they do when they're here. And we've captured a lot of that data, it's kind of scary that how much data you can actually capture from people. And it's from when people do things like download the Weather Network app on their phone, so we capture all that cellphone data, or as much as we can, so we can tell where people go. They've divided citizens in Canada into sixty-seven different personalities. And we can tell when that person comes, probably where they're gonna eat, probably what they're driving, probably where they're gonna stay, that kind of thing. So our goal in tourism promotion is extending stays and extending seasons, so going from two and three days to more like five to seven days if possible, so that involves creating itineraries for the entire region. You know, and getting all that stuff out there that that people can see that they can do. Obviously more tourism, tourism is is one of our main products here. It's, I think it's number three on our industry list.
We've dealt with tourism with, especially with all those numbers and everything with the basketball court, and yeah, there is multitude of thing, but the the thing we found with the provincial tourism and culture was that the numbers are there, but you can't access it. Nobody seems to know how to access it, right? There's so much, so much data there that you can't pull anything out of it. And who would, who would pull that data out? Is it just for your own proprietary stuff, or could somebody?
Got our own for the region, but the province is doing that data provincially, and we're trying to get them to break it down to the boundaries they have didn't really quite match up, right? So we're trying to get them to break that down into better boundaries.
But who can access it? Like, can I, is the basketball court, can they say, oh, can we access your information, how many people are coming across the border, how many people are gonna?
All right, just a second, Council Rotis?
Yeah, I kind of agree with what Council Heisler said just about when, for instance, when they came in and did the community development, the community planning presentation, it was so thorough and explanatory for the public, and it's just it was spelt out in layman's terms, and I think part of the struggle is that perception is reality, and anyone on the outside watching, all they see are big numbers, and they don't have a clear understanding of the RSC's purpose and the mandate, and when we see things like recreation, recreation, sport, even Public Safety Committee, like who is on that committee? What are they doing? What is the purpose? What is that budget for? And not necessarily inline items, but, you know, a presentation of this was the committee that was developed, this was the purpose of the committee, these were the wins, like I'm big on seeing outcomes in visual terms instead of line items, and I think that having something engaging at the end of the year that shows us kind of how this money was spent regionally and what kind of initiatives it brought forth. Because that's the other thing that concerns me, I know you are looking at regional development, so when I see tourism promotion, you know, is that equally spread out across the region, or is that budget predominantly spent on an area like St. Andrews? And those are things that the taxpayers would wanna have those answers and have a better understanding.
Of our website is the is the link to our new tourism brand website, and you can see all that information on tourism. Also on the website, it kind of goes into detail about each of the services, and they each have all the details that are there. I agree with you, it'd be nice to to do a a large production, maybe we don't take enough credit for some of the stuff we're doing, I I agree, but I also don't have very much staff or resources to do it with. It looks like I do, because I've got eight million dollars, but I don't.
Okay, who was first? Council Harding?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank you for coming in. I've heard your presentations before, but if somebody was to stop me on the street today and say what does the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission do, I'd have a heck of a hard time in answering. So I want to thank you for coming in and maybe in a couple of sentences, you could sum up what you do.
No, 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 it's fine, but you know what, I have a hard time answering that question myself after working here for seven years, like sometimes people ask me what a regional service commission is, and I'm like well, it's it's kind of this nonprofit thing that does, anyway, but I spelled it or articulated it as well as I could on the front page of our website, but basically what we do is provide some municipal level services and then in some regional services. We operate like a nonprofit, and but it's basically those things that are, the things that you see here, so it's the solid waste and the local planning, the building inspection, those are the municipal type services. And then there's the tourism promotion, economic development, community development, which are region-wide, and they're focused on the region only. And the problem is we're only thirty thousand people or less in this region, so we can't if we if we get down to to individuals, it's it's, we're difficult, but we are such a diverse region here. We are the only region with islands that are actually local governments, you know, we have, we have so much different things in this region that they might have in other regions that makes that difficult, but some of what we do is just that. Bit of everything, but yeah, I have trouble with the question myself.
Thank you, Council Greenland.
So Hall, it's just one thing to think about, regionalization originally was for economies of scale, to save money, that's why we wanted to regionalize services so that everybody wasn't doing the same thing in their own silo. You put it together, typically, it typically should be cheaper. My question is on the KPIs for tourism promotion, is that something you're gonna be able to share later on so we can see the actual effects of the investment?
Yep, absolutely. But when it comes to economies of scale, I just wanna correct you on that. Yes, when it comes to solid waste, yes, when it comes to building inspection, yes, when it comes to those municipal services, that's the point. But not for the other new regional services, that's not about economy of scale, that's about treating the region as a whole. Which are two different things, right?
I'm just gonna add on to that, you're talking about how we're sharing these services, so we should be able to do it cheaper and more efficiently in our region. But what Hallis isn't telling you, or he may tell you, but I just didn't hear it, is the fact that it's ever-changing, we'd we'd never been given our task and then just go with that same task the next few years, they just keep adding more to us, so we never get, we never get our feet under us. And it's, so that's one of the challenges out there, but and that, yeah, and then, and then that could change again, yeah, but anyway, it is.
Couple of years, so when when they put this out, we we had to do strategic planning, so and they I had to do it with a consultant, and it was super rushed, and it was like completely unrealistic timeline, and we had committee meeting after committee meeting, it was, well, you remember that time, it was craziness. And I had to get it out there, and we had to get it approved, or else we weren't gonna get funding, it was kind of with a gun to our head at the time. I want to, we'll talk about this at the board later this year, but early next year, I want to revisit the strategic planning process so that to revisit the strategic planning process, so that the whole board is involved with the whole thing, so that they can all have ownership of it going forward, and we all have a firm understanding of where it is we're going, what it is we want to do. That's what I, and that's going to be something we're going to do as just us.
And I'll just add too, there has been some regions that tried to go against the grain, and they they were taking control away from them from the province. They went in and removed them. And you've probably seen that on the news just recently. So yeah, they tried to pull out of these mandated budget lines, but they wouldn't let them. Okay, anything else? Well done, Hallis, thank you. I appreciate your efforts on that, and the eight different budgets you have to go through to satisfy that mean board out there, but I appreciate it.
I felt it was the right thing to do, what we did, and and to right-size the service, well, the solid waste service, to where it needed to be. And it was, the timing was just exactly right for it, so.
Okay, thank you so much, Hallis, and your team. Okay, next up is the Visitor Information Center Working Group. Mr. Sumner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to put this just back on the agenda, because we touched on it back in the spring, and we got through the summer. We had a visit from our friends from GNB in regards to the VIC, and it being a provincially-supported VIC. They've given us a one-year grace period for this summer, which has just ended, because we doesn't have the floor space, we don't have bathrooms. As you know, back in the spring, we talked about the other option, which we had, which is was the small farmhouse, and we wanted to, now we've got through the summer, you know, develop a this this working group for for the VIC, with hopefully a short turnaround that we can get a decision, so we can move forward on this, because the province isn't going to support that being a provincial VIC next year. They gave us this, said the exemption. And so here I am, and I brought my events coordinator with me. Michelle, as you, as most of you know, if you don't, this is Michelle, just to just to help support, she has a lot of of the raw data, a lot of the facts and figures, which we can share with you if there is any questions. It's just developing developing the working group, hopefully with a short turnaround, so we can, we can get a decision on that, because the the clock is ticking, and it's not easy to get contractors to to help us do the work, so we can, we can go.
Oh, sorry, I just thought you were done. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just going to add, this is just one of the things that the province is pulling out of, and this money, people got to understand, this money's coming from our taxpayers. So instead of getting that service that we are still paying for in our taxes at somewhere, because it went to the province, that's not coming back through to us, and they're asking us to absorb those costs. And this is just one topic. I mean, it's happened on many things. It's a $200 million question, actually, is what it is to the municipalities, but just shows you what, how we have to be creative and make tourism, which is very important to our area, and to make it work. But and like I said, but the problem is, it's getting transferred to the taxpayers. And I feel like we're, it's almost like we're paying for it twice, that's how I feel. But Counselor Wright?
Just for those of us like me, who aren't familiar with how this all happened, I remember when the Circle K got built, and it was in there, and then it closed. So can you just explain why the town is, what predicament we're in? Like, you're referring to the, we need the Visitor Information Center, but I don't know the backstory and why we're at where we're at, and where we need to go.
Thank you, Counsel Wright. Just to give a bit of information, so we had actually started our own small information kiosk, we called it, in 2019, because we felt that the Provincial Visitor Information Center was not doing anything for our town. People were driving in and going into it, and they wouldn't even know it was International Festival or Chocolate Festival, because they were provincial employees who were coming in. A lot of them were not even hired from Charlotte County. They were coming in from St. John, doing their hours, and driving home. And so we opened our own building, and we actually noticed an uptake in attendance and information downtown. Then in 2022, the province decided that they were not going to reopen any of the VICs that had been closed during COVID. And so what they did is they come, they came down to our community, because they knew we had an information kiosk. And so I met with members, it was the deputy minister at the time, and some of staff, and we discussed utilizing our VIC, as the provincially-designated VIC for St. Stephen, because at the time, there was nowhere else and no one else who could take it on. And at that time, the province asked us what we needed to do to get it up and running. And one of the things was that that building is old, it is moldy, it leaks, and it is too small a floor space to meet their minimum standards. So in 2022, the council at the time and THC, in agreeance, looked at different options that would match the budget and what we needed it to do. And that's when the purchase of the cabin was made. And it didn't make it in time for that season, and they were giving us a grace for 2022. And then they gave us another grace in 2023, because the cabin didn't get put up, we had just been amalgamated, everything was going on, they gave us another grace period. 2024, I submitted my application again, stating we still only have the blue building, and THC didn't, honestly, when she showed up here to do our inspection, said she didn't realize we hadn't built the new one yet. And so we instantly failed, because we do not meet the minimum standards. We've had a building in our possession for two years that they've paid for, that will meet the minimum floor standards. This year, just to get that building operational for our staff, we had to buy new doors, because the doors had been kicked in. So we do, we did spend about $2,000 on new doors for the VIC. And then moving some stuff around, we had to buy new furniture, because the flakeboard furniture we've been using, which was donated by the other VIC, which was always indoors, but it had flooded over the past two years. We kept getting floodwaters, and all of that wood was now molding up the sides. So we had to buy all new stuff. So all in all, we spent about $4,500 just to get the the VIC funk, that blue building VIC functional for this year. And we do have a building that will meet minimum standards. We still have to work with them about the washrooms facilities, because, again, it was a temporary measure. We are, you know, 200 feet away. The G, the Garcelon Civic Center was deemed okay at the time. They would like us to have some restrooms closer, either in the way of a porta potty or just a temporary trailer. But as it stands now, we will lose our provincial designation if we stay with our current situation. And so we're removed from their website, we'd have to be removed. I just was looking at the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission website, our Visitor Information Center is on there. We would lose all that designation, and so the closest two VICs to us would then be directing everyone to McAdam or St. Andrews, if we can't get something up and running.
I just wanted to add as well, back in 2022, we did get some provincial funding. It was a a one-time, I think it was $50,000, just to support this, because there was only, I think, three provincial VICs all along the the border at the time. So they didn't, you know, $50,000 is a lot of money, and that went towards the building of the cab, the purchase of the cabin, and and a lot of the other resources that we're still using. So the the expenses, we, that wasn't from St. Stephen tax use, but it was from provincial dollars, but we are kind of at a critical point now, where we need to to act, because with mold in there, with staff in there, it's 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 great from the outside, but when you get up close, there is some work to do in there. And obviously, with the with the cabin we do have that's already purchased, it's it's a case we need to prepare the the footprint for it, and then, you know, get it up and and running, and it should meet the standards which GNB is expecting, so.
And just to add, to increase the concrete footprint and put it up, that was part of the money the province has given us. It is just sitting in trust. So again, that also would not be St. Stephen taxpayer money, that is provincial money to get that up and running.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Highslip?
Thanks, Michelle. That was a good explanation. So the washrooms are included in that cost?
No, the washrooms would be something we'd have to take on ourselves, but at this point, we still have a buffer of the provincial money that is left over to buy us some time for a few years, even if we had to rent a toilet trailer to put down there. We do have a couple of years to figure this out, if we're able to keep our designation. But once we lose it, it is very hard to obtain that designation again from the province.
There may be some opportunities in other buildings and projects that are ongoing right now, that have been discussed. I don't know if you're aware of them, and we can have a chat about them after some time.
I am actually aware of what you're you're talking about, and this might be the bridge we need to get us to that point, because that's not something I believe from discussions that would be ready for 2025. And my immediate concern, I guess, would be, first week in June 2025, are we opening with our provincial designation or not?
Counsel Roethlis?
I think that the the neat thing about the VIC, though, is it it can offer an opportunity too, to be able to store things like the paddleboards. That would be something that you would want long-term. So I think whatever decision it is, if it can be convenient long-term for you, we should make it work. So to me, if we could find a location that's larger, that could accommodate bathrooms in-house, and hold paddleboards, maybe hold kayaks, whatever needs to be stored, that would be super helpful. I just wondered if the province, I know they've given us a lot of grace thus far, but do you think that they would allow us even to rent short-term for a small season, to get through as we move to the larger, you know, destination or the final destination, rather than having us kind of, I know we're throwing things together a little bit now, but maybe we could negotiate just letting us rent next summer, so that we could prepare something long-term that could also, you know, align with the strategic plan of having the waterfront be an accessible resource for us. And I I noticed that, like, I noticed the staff having to lug the paddleboards back and forth. There's a lot of work that goes into that little, small space down there. So if we had something long-term that could store items as well, like, you know, paddles and life jackets and things like that, it just may be easier for our staff long-term.
Through the summer months, we actually do store them inside. They just, yes, have to take them outside at, every morning, the container with all of the life jackets goes out, and the paddleboards all go out. And so we've been making it work. The new cabin was actually designed with a wrap porch, so that it could actually store the paddleboards on the side. So we did, you're you're correct, that was actually purchased two years ago with paddleboarding in mind, as we are trying to increase use of the St. Croix River. And we did, it was a good year this year for that. As for the province, I of course can't speak for them, but I can say that in 2013, sorry, 2023, when they gave us our last round of funding, they did state in writing, that's it.
Okay. Oh, Counsel Harding.
Thank you. Well, I certainly would think, since we're the gateway gateway to Canada, that we should have a tourist information center, and, you know, a nice one. I don't know what that involves, but I would think that the province would want us to have There you go. There you go. Anyway, I just think that we should have one.
I agree, Counsel Harding. Was your hand up? Yeah, Counsel Wright?
I guess I was just going to ask, could you clarify what your ask is here tonight? Just for the, like, you want to form a committee, you want counselors to be there, or are you saying we need to start planning in a capital budget for a space to put the cabin? I guess, could you clarify what your ask is tonight?
I think, yes, the the answer is, we need a working group. I think the biggest need we need is probably a definitive bookend to the to the working group, so we can come up with a a decision, whether it's two months, three months, just so by June 2025, we have something in place, whether it is a different option of renting or it's the cabin. It's just, we need something to to be to be defined and ready to go, because, yeah,
Counsel Cornish?
Problem is, there we go. Just a question to you for clarification, I get a little bit confused. We have our little building down by the water, it's got materials that we can use to access the river. I believe that can be built on in the future, once we get to it. But I'm confused that we have a tourist facility out next to the Irving Station that's been vacant for years, but I presume the province owns that. Who, what's that? Oh, it's filled now? I didn't notice that. What's in there now? For curiosity, I didn't real.
The workroom, no secondary education.
Okay, sorry about that. I didn't realize it was filled.
Okay. So you got you got one volunteer, and maybe we'll gather some up, and once we start talking about it, and help you out. And thank you. Next up, we got the draft amendment bylaw 03-23. Is that going to be you, Jeff?
So what we've done per the previous direction was prepared the documents to amend our council remuneration bylaw, with the addition of three sections that were in the former Town of St. Stephen bylaw, which dealt with cost of living increases to council remuneration, also confirming that you're eligible to to get travel allowances per that policy, and and a proration should anyone resign midterm or something like that. You know, just clarifying that scenario. It doesn't happen often, but it does happen from time to time. So we just wanted to run it by you, that we caught the changes you were looking for. And then if it's committee satisfied, we'll prep it for first reading at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Any questions or comments?
The price index ever go below zero? Theoretically possible, I was going to say, yeah. No, lately, I was going to say. Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, I mean, just because it's in here for cost of, doesn't mean we have to do it, neither. If I'm correct, we can say whatever you want to say and change it. Okay. All right, so you don't need anything else? You're just presenting that? This will come up in council?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, looks good. All right. Thank you, Jeff. And counsel? Oh, all right. I need a move or a secondary pursuant to section 68 bracket 1, the Local Governments Act. The council moved to a closed session for the proposed discussing of one potential litigation matter and negotiation of an agreement. Any, any, okay, okay, Counsel Wright, Counsel Cornish, any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? We are now moving into closed.